...of Appeals meeting this evening, please rise for the pledge to the flag. The flag is...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Woodbury zoning board of appeals meeting. We meet the second Wednesday of every month. Our next meeting will be on November fourteenth. It will not be here, it will be at the village hall on Route thirty-two, four fifty-five, Route thirty-two. If you need to use your Google Maps, it's really right down the road. It's the firehouse that's down the road, it's our village hall. So, November fourteenth, our zoning board meeting will be at village hall. I'd like to introduce our board. To your far right, we have Mr. Joseph DiNudo, Mr. Gary Kestenbaum, Mr. Kevin Abrams, Mr. Andrew Jacomaza. To your far left is Mr. Michael Donnelly, our counsel, our recording secretary, Ms. Jessica...
McClellan.
(laughing) So, Charles. I was. Jessica McClellan and I'm Karen Unger. Thank you for being patient.
Wow.
Yeah. That was scary. All right, well, let's look at our agenda. We have no executive session. Has everyone looked at the minutes for last month?
Yes, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? No? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. First item on the agenda is new business. We have an interpretation requested by the building inspector. What we have is a letter from the building inspector to the zoning board, and I'll read it to you. It says, "I'd like to request an interpretation pursuant to section three-ten dash forty-nine C four. Although fence requirements are not part of the zoning code, they are listed in chapter one forty-six, which allows for an interpretation to the zoning board. I received complaints regarding, quote, 'curtains,' end of quote, that have been installed around swimming pools for religious purposes. I've issued several violation orders and request the zoning board interpretation of these curtains prior to issuing an appearance ticket. I'm including a photo of a typical curtain for your reference, as well as letters from the homeowners in response to the violation notice. As you can see, these structures are quite high and extensive. Thank you for your consideration." I think what we have to do is decide if we have jurisdiction whether or not we can issue an interpretation. I have your letter that you gave to us, and I looked up on the New York State website where it says, "The interpretation power is part of the appellate jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals and cannot be lawfully exercised unless an appeal has been taken from an enforcement officer's decision," which it does not. So, we do not have the power to interpret?
Yeah, as I mentioned in my letter to you, an appeal is the equivalent of a challenge, and the building inspector is not, realistically could not, challenge his own determination. And by serving the violation notices, he had made a determination that these pools, these curtains around the pools are in fact a violation of the sign order. I certainly understand his motivation to be conservative and careful before he does it, but my recommendation to you, unless you have a longstanding practice that's different from what I've outlined, I do not believe you would be properly exercising your jurisdiction. You would in effect be giving an advisory opinion, which is not permitted.
So, do we then just wait until the homeowner's appeal?
They certainly have the right to.
Right, so, in other words, Gary issues the violations and here they have appearance tickets?
Yeah, and they have a time period.
And then they can appeal, and then we can...
Then you would be able to confront the issue?
Able to do that. We notice it and have a public hearing if necessary and do an interpretation.
Yes.
So, is that then closed at this time? Do we have to vote on it?
I think we should, yeah.
So, do we have a motion to not issue any interpretation this evening?
I'll make that motion.
And wait until one of the aggregates appeals?
I'll make that motion, and I'll second that. I agree with that maybe then.
Any more discussion? Okay, Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, I guess we'll just let Gary know that we will not be making interpretation this evening. Okay, we have two actions, our decisions. The first is Brock and Mann, review and decision for area variances to permit the demolition and rebuilding of an existing single-family dwelling, leaving a front yard setback of thirty-seven point four feet, whereas a forty-foot front yard setback is required, and side yard setbacks of seventeen point three feet and twenty-five point four feet, whereas a thirty-foot side yard setback is required pursuant to section three-ten dash six-F and three-ten dash seven district regulations. Furthermore, said lot has eleven thousand four hundred fifty-six square feet lot area, whereas fifteen thousand square foot is required for lots subdivided prior to nineteen fifty-three pursuant to section three-ten dash forty-three point one C number one. Said property is located in the R-one-A zoning district at one ninety-five Baker Town Road, Highland Mills, SBL two-seventy, block, lot number, two-seventeen dash one dash seven. And after several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law Section seven dash seven twelve dash B C, the board hereby grants the variances as requested upon the following conditions. The variances hereby granted are granted for the purpose of authorizing a raise and rebuild of a one-and-a-half-story, single-family home on the existing foundation footprint as shown on the plans. No construction other than as shown, and for that purpose is authorized by this decision, and no future or different construction can occur without a new variance being granted. Number two, this application is not decided in a vacuum, but is rather tied to a specific application for approval of a building permit pending before the office of the building inspector. Therefore, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant diligently pursuing his application before that official. This grant of variance, unless extended, shall expire if a building permit for the proposed house is not obtained by the applicant within ninety days from the date of this decision.
I make a motion to accept it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Joe, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, the decision will be as written. Second decision is Redgird, review and decision for an area variance to permit the installation of a six-foot-high wood stockade fence in a side yard, whereas pursuant to section one forty-six dash five-B and one forty-six dash seven-A, a solid six-foot-high fence is only permitted in a rear yard. Said property is located in the R-two-A zoning district at forty-five Florence Drive, Central Valley, SBL two-two-six dash one dash seventy-four point dot fifteen.[511.12][511.12](laughing) Wow. After several pages of facts and findings, the decision is as follows. In employing the balancing tests set forth in Village Law Section seven dash seven twelve dash B letter C, the board hereby grants the variance as requested upon the following conditions. This approval is not granted in a vacuum, but is rather one of two independent yet interconnected approvals, the other being within the jurisdiction of the village building inspector. As such, this grant of variance is conditioned upon approval of the proposed fence plans by the Village of Woodbury Building Inspector. The applicant is not decided, the application, I'm sorry, is not decided in a vacuum, but is rather, as noted above, tied to a specific application for approval of a permit pending before the office of the building inspector. Therefore, this approval is conditioned upon the applicant diligently pursuing his application before that official. This grant of variance, unless extended, shall expire if a permit for the proposed fence is not obtained by the applicant within ninety days from the date of the decision. Do I have a motion to accept this as written?
I'll make that motion. I second.
Joe, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
And Gary?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So, this decision is also accepted as written. Okay, public hearings, first one, Shops of Woodbury LLC, continuation of public hearing for area variances and interpretation. Applicant proposes to construct a commercial center hotel having a lot area of nine point six-five acres. The height of the proposed hotel is sixty-foot-high, whereas pursuant to section three-ten dash seven regulations, the maximum height permitted is thirty-five feet. Furthermore, the applicant requires an interpretation as to whether a hotel is permitted as part of a commercial center pursuant to section three-ten dash forty-nine C three. In the alternative, the applicant is requesting an area variance from the minimum lot area required pursuant to section three-ten dash six-F. Said property is located in the Ivy Zoning District, above the intersection of State Route, of State Route thirty-two and Losi Lane in Central Valley, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two-twenty-five, block one, lots thirty-four point one and thirty-four point two. This is a public hearing that's open indefinitely till the applicant reappears, so if there's anyone who wishes to speak to this application, is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Do I have a motion to hold this over? Do we have to have a second motion? We did, indefinite.
I wouldn't even put it on here until they're moving.
Well, because it's open for public, they can speak.
If you don't think that it's likely that they're going to come back for some number of months, you may require them to renotice it so you don't have to announce this every month. It's up to you. It's a moratorium and there's...
I think there's, yeah, there's all kinds of...
So, it may be six months, and rather than have it on your agenda every month, require them to renotice it.
I just thought they were going off the list until Dave decided to come back. That's how I interpret.
Well, it is for as far as the agenda, right? For as far as the public hearing portion, I would say yes, that they may open tomorrow.
But you can close it subject to reopening it.
If they're not going to be here, why would anyone else come up?
Any more questions?
No, no, I'm ready. It's so, I want to...
Optimistic, right? Okay.
So, we're just going to leave it the way it is?
No, I said, unless there's a motion.
No, we made a motion last month.
To keep it open and get it out.
Right.
Okay, so that's...
In effect, that means we're saying that it won't be open month by month and it'll be renoticed at some time, is it a fact, or you want to just...
I thought it was just, they requested that it remain as a public hearing, but they...
The announcement will be continued at the November meeting for public hearing.
Okay, so Shops of Woodbury will be, do I need to make a motion for that, or is that...
I guess you have an outstanding motion. It should be announced so that the public knows.
All right, so Shops of Woodbury LLC will be on the agenda for November fourteenth for public comment.
I think it made a motion last night, how you just announced. Kevin's got to go home for his NPR, this is us.
Next public hearing, May 11. Continuation of public hearing to amend conditions on previously approved zoning board area variance dated July two thousand fifteen for a new single-family dwelling. The condition as noted in the approved decision being, quote, "The home shall not exceed forty foot by thirty foot," end of quote. Additionally, it shall not have more than two stories and will contain no basement. It shall include an attached two-car garage. There shall be a maximum of three bedrooms, end of quote. The applicant proposes to construct a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling that is thirty-four feet by forty-foot with a basement and eliminate the two-car garage. No further variances would be required. Said property is located in the R-two-A zoning district at three Second Street, a vacant lot at the corner of Scunamuck Road in Highland Mills, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section two-fourteen, block eight, lot three. This is an applicant looking for approval to change the plans for a house that was previously approved in two thousand fifteen. The applicant appeared in two thousand, in August of this year, and we kept the public hearing open so that they could provide proof of a change in circumstances since the board's original decision. Is the applicant present? Would you please approach the podium and give your name so that our secretary can...
Let me just note that the importance of that change in circumstances is if they demonstrate that, is a vote by majority. If they do not demonstrate a change in circumstances, and they're asking you simply to change the earlier decision, that would take an unanimous vote of the board to open the hearing for consideration, and it would take an unanimous vote of the board to amend the decision. So, only if there's a change in circumstances can we go by the usual rule.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. My name is Neil Frishberg, and I'm a candidate for Frishberg.
Can you spell your last name?
F-R-I-S-H-B-E-R-G.
Can you turn the microphone away? Thank you.
That better?
Yeah.
Okay. I have for the board a memorandum which sort of outlines our position. If I can hand it to the board before beginning?
This should have been submitted prior to this meeting, because we can't read that now?
No, but I'm going to go over it. Can I hand it out afterwards so it's in the record?
You can hand it to us, but, you know, we'll get it now.
Okay. So, there's two issues for this board to decide. The first issue is whether they should rehear the matter as revision, or whether there are new facts or a change in circumstances. As Mr. Donnelly pointed out, if there is a change in circumstances, then we don't need a affirmative vote of the entire board for the board to consider our application. If the board determines that there is a change in circumstances, then the issue then becomes whether the board should change the conditions of the variance. We're not asking to change the variance itself, but only the conditions of the variance that this board imposed in its decision of July twenty-two, two thousand fifteen. As the board may recall, Mr. Malick owns point-two-seven acres in two-fourteen dash eight dash three in the Village of Woodbury. On June sixth, two thousand fifteen, he requested an area variance. He wanted an approved lot to sell to a potential builder. The footprint of the house would be twelve hundred square feet with a two-car garage, and there would be two floors and three bedrooms. Due to the size of the lot, he requested an eight-foot side yard variance, an eight-foot front yard variance, and a thirteen-foot rear yard variances. At the hearing which occurred on June tenth, two thousand fifteen, Jim Clearwater and my partner Alan Whitman represented the applicant. My understanding is that Mr. Malick did not appear. Mr. Thornberg, Thorn Thomasberger, excuse me, Thomasberger provided the board with some background concerning this lot, and he indicated it was subject to the provisions in effect prior to nineteen ninety. During that hearing, the board posed several questions to the applicant. For example, where would the applicant locate the septic system? The applicant explained the location and why it would not affect the neighbor. What would the home look like? Mr. Clearwater explained that the house would be built on a slab with a crawl space. There would be no basement. The proposed house would have a two-car garage. The house would be less than twenty-three hundred square feet, and the house would have three bedrooms. The septic system would be designed for three bedrooms. The weather, the applicant was going to build a house for himself. Mr. Whitman advised the board that he wanted an approved building, lot to sell to a potential developer of a building. Based on these facts, the board in a decision dated July twenty-two, two thousand fifteen, granted the variance subject to certain conditions. Among all those is that the footprint of the house would not exceed forty by thirty feet. The home would not be more than two stories. The house would not contain a basement. The home would include an attached two-car garage. It would be a maximum of three bedrooms. The home would comply with the proposed plans at that time dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen. The septic system would be exactly as noted on the plan and would comply with any state and local requirements, and he would have to satisfy the Village of Woodbury Building Department that the proposed septic system would operate properly. With respect to Mr. Donnelly's analysis in his letter to this board, in which we have a copy, we agree that the zoning board may not refuse to consider an application with respect to which there has been a substantial change in circumstances, and we submit that that is in fact had occurred here during the three years that has elapsed since the decision of July twenty-two, two thousand fifteen. When the applicant applied to the variance on June sixth, of June sixth, two fifteen, he believed it was not necessary for him to have a basement and the house to be built on a slab. He relied on Jim Clearwater in that regard. Among the reasons he was willing to build the basement on a slab was due to the need for footing drains to drain the water into, what the engineer called daylight, and Mr. Sandor will explain more, explain that better than I can. But Mr. Clearwater believed that if the footing drains were buried three or four feet below the ground, the topography of the land prevented gravity from allowing the water to be expelled from the footing drains, for over the applicant was unsure of the height of the water table. After the ZBA decision, Mr. Clearwater reviewed the site with a building inspector. In reviewing the site, they realized that the water table is not quite as high as they thought it might be. This would enable a basement to be built so that the occupants of the building could use it for mechanical storage, not to live in, but just to put the HVAC equipment and just to put a furnace. Instead of a crawl space, the basement could be six feet high. No one would live there, and as I said, it could put an HVAC system as well as a furnace. After reviewing the water table, the engineer realized that water could be pumped out using a sump pump. If necessary, a generator could be installed in the event the electricity went out during storm. For three years, Mr. Malick has tried without success to sell this building lot. For three years, he's paid taxes on the lot without being able to sell it. Unfortunately, the market dictates what Mr. Malick needs to do to sell this lot. After three years, he has a buyer ready, willing, and able to purchase the lot, to which I have, I have in my hand a signed contract. He has provided, the contract is conditioned though on him having a basement that he can install the HVAC system and the furnace. The buyer needs an additional, the buyer needs an additional bedroom. He wants to replace the two-car garage with one bedroom. This doesn't affect the variance itself, because it's not required the property be any closer to the lot lines. The septic system has been redesigned so that it accommodates four bedrooms in the house, and Mr. Sandor will elaborate. The driveway has been redesigned so that it accommodates two cars, and the plan has been redesigned so it does not violate the twenty percent cover rule. I think everyone can understand that a buyer doesn't really want a HVAC ductwork and a furnace upstairs. I have a furnace in my basement. It's noisy. No one wants to live on the same floor as a furnace. There'll be no change in the non-conforming use, although the footprint of the house might be a bit larger, it still supports the character of the neighborhood. The septic system has been redesigned to accommodate four bedrooms. In the case that Mr. Donnelly cited, time, that is the period of time between the original variance and the time of the change that's requested is a factor. I believe that's the town I slept in. I submit that the change in the conditions, not only, I submit that change in the conditions not only do not change the variance, but also comply with the Village of Woodbury zoning code as well as the Village law. There will be no undesirable change in the neighborhood, there will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. A good portion of the neighborhood has two stories homes, nor is the home so much bigger or smaller than any other house. The footprint is just about the same, and this court noted that in its prior decision. After the prior hearing, the applicant showed the board that an aerial photograph that revealed that this lot was surrounded by similarly small lots. There's no other way to build a house on this lot. The variances are not substantial, and this court founds it the same, and we're not asking for any change in those variances. The proposed variance does not have adverse impact on the neighborhood. The house is not that much larger, and no one is adversely affected. So, here's what we'd like the board to do. We want, we're willing to put a copy of the decision, a new decision, attached to the contract of sale. The home will not exceed forty by thirty-four, as opposed to forty by thirty. It will not have more than two stories, which is what we decided before. It will contain a basement, but not exceeding six feet high, that would be used for mechanical equipment. It will not have a basement that someone could live in. There will not be a garage, but there will be sufficient parking for two cars in front on the site. It will have a maximum of four bedrooms and shall comply with the proposed plans submitted by NJS Engineering. The septic system will be exactly as noted on the plan and be equipped for four bedrooms. It will be subject to any and all conditions and notes on the original subdivision map, and the applicant will be responsible for satisfying the Village of Woodbury. Thank you for your time.
Again, there was a few issues that were raised at the last board meeting. Sure, it's Michael J. Sandor, MJS Engineering. The issue regarding the basement, obviously, the basement would work much more, much better if you were able to put the HVAC system, the furnace, and the ductwork within the basement. As was stated, the basement height would be six feet. It would be considered an unoccupiable space as far as people having it as a living room or a rec room, let's say. It would only be for the mechanical and maybe storage and miscellaneous items. Six feet is less than what's required for the building code. I believe the building code requires seven foot six for a building height or floor to ceiling height for an occupiable space, and it also requires egress windows. None of that would be provided for this particular dwelling. As far as the sump system, a sump system in lieu of a daylighted outlet is written into the state building code, the international code, two thousand fifteen, and actually it was written into the revisions back in two thousand when the, when the state adopted the last revision that went through. There was a question regarding the geometry, and the geometry is such that because the lot lines are not parallel with the actual building, the footprint of the building meets those requirements as shown on the plan that was submitted to you. As far as the septic system, the septic system is an Elgin system, and there is sufficient area to provide the four-bedroom dwelling septic system. Now, one of the things that's important to understand is the fact that after the last ZBA decision, we moved ahead with the building department and had a joint site inspection with the building inspector. So, now we, those septic design requirements have been verified by the town, and the only thing we would do now is apply for a building permit for the building, and of course, hopefully with the variance being approved. As far as the percent lot coverage, I did not have an answer for you last time. I went back and spoke to my partner, and the lot percent coverage includes the blacktop, it includes any walkways, and it also includes the area which would be in front of the building and which would be a covered place where someone could stand.
A porch, okay.
A porch. So, what we did is we reduced the area of the parking area. I believe it's, we're looking at like twenty-four by twenty-two, which is sufficient for two cars to park. We show a five-foot walkway to the house, and then that area which is covered for the main entrance. So, we are good with the nineteen percent. We could go to twenty, but we're satisfied with the nineteen percent.
But that's why they both agreed, because there's more blacktop than the original.
Yes, yes.
It makes sense.
Okay. I believe I've covered the items that were from the technical point of view.
Malick, can you tell us why you didn't sell the property for three years?
My name is Abraham Malek, and first I wanted to thank the board for first, for three years ago giving me that approval. I appreciate it. And I put the house on the market, and it's been there on MLS and all of this. I was trying to sell, and there had a lot of people interested in it, but when they started looking on approval, it just was, everybody just slipped out because people who are interested in a house like this, in that particular neighborhood, want a bigger house for their families. It doesn't have to be huge, it doesn't have to be three thousand square foot, but at least the minimum of twenty-five hundred square foot in order for them to be able to lift their, to... at least five, six children, seven, eight. So I finally got, after waiting so long, I decided to go to contract and relying on the fairness of you to allow me to sell it and to finally sell it. I have that lot for more than ten years, and I'm glad for that. I would really appreciate it. You best have.
I have a question for the engineer, because I am not very stupid when it comes to engineering. Tell me again why you discovered that now you can add a basement, whereas before you didn't think you could?
We actually discussed that in the office, and probably when we first looked at the, first of all, the property was very, very, you know, it's flat, there's no hill, and I think at that point, we just decided that we'll design it as a slab on grade, and you don't have the fall to go out with a gravity pipe to daylight. And that was probably okay, I mean, with the owner back then of the property, and it was just something that was discussed, and we said, okay, we'll put a slab on grade. Now, in Orange County, there's very, very little houses that are built without a basement. And in this particular case, the basement, when you think about it, does make sense when you run ductwork in a basement, sealing, or piping, or hot water pipes, or even a hydraulic system. It just makes sense to have an area where a technician would go down the basement and work on your furnace or your H V A system, your air conditioner, or even put an oil tank down there. And that's, that's the reason. So back then, yeah, we said, all right, let's put a slab on grade, okay? But you can, under building code requirements, under the section known as foundations, you can put a under-drain system and pipe it to a sump pump, which would be located in the basement if there's any water that rose up or made its way into the basement. And that's the best explanation I'd give of why it was changed.
Well, weren't there pumps back then that you could hose?
Like I said, it was probably discussed, okay, we'll put a slab on grade, and it wasn't thought out.
It kind of makes, it makes it sound like to me that we just applied to the bare minimum to get a variance. Now, if I had to reconsider a variance today under these new conditions, maybe my answer wouldn't have been yes, like last time. You asked for a three-bedroom house on a slab. We went through all the rigmarole. We thought it would be okay. But now we want to change it. You know, he was selling it, they were selling it to somebody else that wanted a three-bedroom. Now they're selling it to somebody else that wants a four-bedroom. I'm not a big fan of just keep changing stuff just to suit a sale and piece of property, to be honest with you.
Excuse me, may I ask, please? As I can recall, by him, it's a very busy engineer, he doesn't maybe recall what happened back then, but it's, I don't have that memory. So I remember what happened back then. As far as I can, I can remember what happened then, the engineer, which was his associate, Clearwater, told me that if it's going to be any basement, it will be always wet because the water level, it's right, it's very, it's like, I would say, like, three hundred feet close to a water body. There's a lake not too far from there, and he told me that if I make a basement, it would always be wet, and the whole house is going to be moldy, so he liked, told me that it's impossible. But I still told him, I still, I know that it's not going to sell without a basement, but he, he was just like, was very stubborn with it. But what I did later on, I did a deep soil test together with Gary Collins, together with Jim Clearwater from Mike's office, and they confirmed it's in the plan, they confirmed that the water table is actually six foot below ground. And so that concern was just overblown concern, which didn't come out of the board, it came from Clearwater himself. As you can see, the minutes of the first meeting by the ZB A, it was not the concern of the board, this whole thing about a basement. They didn't raise that issue at all. They didn't ask about it, as you can study that minute, and you're going to see, that he volunteered that thing because he thought for himself that it might be a problem with water in the basement. So as far as I understand, I understand the situation, it's, it's not something which was a part of the approval, a subject to the approval, it's just something he slipped his tongue because he wanted to do the best thing for me by not providing a basement. But since we did, since then, we did the deep water test, the deep water, the soil test, and the soil conditions and stuff, and he said it's very good soil, it has a good perk, and we should not have any concern, we should not have any problems. Since then, the whole picture changed.
They must have done a perk when they came in with the first design, so they must have known the soil back then.
The fact is that they did not do a deep soil test before we got this approval, it was subject to a deep soil test. We actually did it after we got the approval, it's right on the plans, on the engineering plans.
Sir, you're, you're, you're right, we did do some preliminary plans. That's true. Okay, but I think the, the real answer here...
So you knew then that how far down it was.
Well, no, it, it...
Yes, you did.
Excuse me?
Yes, you did.
What's that?
Well, you wouldn't have gotten able to perk it if it was all wet.
Right. What I'm saying is, the real answer to your question is the fact that it makes better sense to have a mechanical area within this building versus a slab on grade. Can a slab on grade be provided to this house? Yes, it can. It's not a full basement with a full height, that will, I think the concern is that it would be an occupiable space. It's not going to be an occupiable space strictly for storage, and it would be just for the mechanical equipment. And the state building code, as far as this, this, you know, lights of daylight, does reflect and indicate that you can have a sump pump within the basement. But really, yes, it was...
So you're just passing all the horrors on to the new owner?
No, no.
If the sump pump quits, if the power's out...
I always brought up because...
Put out water in a basement.
That was brought up the last, at the last meeting, what if the power goes out?
Gary, can I ask a question? I, I understand, I think I understand the concept of, not a civil engineer, but slab on grade. The concept before that there aren't many houses in Orange County that don't have basements, there are, I think in Woodbury, there are a lot of bi-levels, am I right? A lot of bi-levels, and my particular bi-level on Jackson Street is partially slab on and partially below grade. Where the, I don't know what direction that would be, north, northeast maybe, section of the house where the fireplace is, is clearly below grade. And the other end where the, total opposite side where the garage is, is at grade. And my, the, I, I understand the concept of wanting to do something different, for whatever, for the reason. But what I don't get is, I want to do it differently specifically because I want to put the furnace and integrate furnace and air conditioning system in a basement. I have a furnace room, if you will, a combination furnace and boiler room, and laundry room in, on my, in my rec room, the bottom floor, the slab. And the sounds there are not intrusive, in fact, there's a bedroom down there. These bedrooms, these bi-levels are, many of them are four-bedroom. And I'm down there, person who lived in the bedroom, when my children went home, nobody heard any noise, so the, and, and it is ducted, if you will, it is plumbed to effectively heat and air condition the house, so I'm not getting the idea that we need to put in a complete basement in order to find a suitable place for an HVAC system. That's the part I'm not getting.
A bi-level is typically built four feet below grade. They're a very efficient house to be built. In other words, when you estimate out the basement, four feet, that's the level that the bottom of the footing should be, and that's why they're a very efficient house to be built. As you enter a house, you either go down four feet, or you go up four feet, or four and a half feet to get the ceiling height for the first floor. So a bi-level is a very efficient house to be constructed. I guess we could argue about whether you have noise or not noise for a furnace room or whatever, but this particular house, because it's a square house with a small footprint, okay, it works best to be, you know, have level floors and also have a basement. And, you know, we could argue the pluses or minuses of a basement, but the reality of it is having a basement for your mechanical equipment, including your piping runs and your heating systems and your air conditioning ductwork, makes better sense to have a basement. Can a basement be built on this? Yes. Was there a mistake to say there was a slab the last time? Yes, there clearly was, okay? You probably should have said, or never even brought up the fact that you would have a slab on grade. So the issue here is, this new owner would like to have a basement, it's not going to be a high-ceiling basement, it's just for mechanical room, it's not going to be for occupancy, and it makes better sense on a small footprint.
Gary, excuse me, can I ask Mike a question? Yes.
Sure.
Mike, what is the legal definition of change of circumstances?
I think that's, I don't think there's any particular legal definition. Is, what is different is not a, not a, the circumstances must have changed, rather than the applicant's view of what they should have done before versus what they wanted to do now.
In your opinion, does the applicant meet the criteria for change of circumstances?
Gary, I think that's for your, for your board to decide.
I can respond to that, Gary, in my personal judgment at this point. From what you've told me, originally, you were not going to put a basement in because you're going to build this property on a slab on the grade, correct? Am I, you with me so far?
Yeah, that's what the engineer and the board...
Okay. And then you told me that Mr. Clearwater, is that his name?
Yes.
Said that if you put, because if you put a basement in, it would be wet and moldy and whatever, and so you decided not to go with that because his professional opinion to you was not to do that, correct?
Yes.
Yet he didn't sign off on the plans, I believe Mr. Sandor did, and he signed off on both of them. And you agree that the pump was discussed prior to the, our decision, but you said it really wasn't thought out, those are the words you said. It was discussed but not thought out. And where were you going to put the pipes before, if there was no basement? I mean, the pipes, you had the pipes somewhere, right?
I think, in response to your question, the pumps discussed, I think the answer was no, the sump pump wasn't discussed.
No, you said, I just wrote down, I asked, and you said, well, it was, it was discussed, but it was not, not, not thought out, it was discussed.
I think Mike said that he discussed it with his partner, I think that's what he said. Mike said he discussed it with his office.
Okay, right, all right, well, it doesn't matter who just, it doesn't matter to, you know, who discussed it, if you're working on these plans for someone. So in my mind, I don't see a change in circumstances or a change in facts, I see a change in what you could have done but didn't do. Now you decided you'd like to do that, that's the way I'm looking at it. I, I don't... Someone on the way in looking here?
The change of circumstances I see is the fact that we did the deep, deep soil testing. The perk was probably was done before we got approval practice. For the deep soil test, we had to check the, down with the tractor, with the machine, down, they dug down like, I think, six, seven foot, or maybe ten foot down with the machine, I had the machine there, and they checked the soil of the water table, and they found that it's much lower than the, than what we expected, that it's, that it's, that we thought that it's before. We thought that it's very high, so that's the change of circumstances. We found out, we did the deep soil test, and the results was that it's different than before. I don't think a change of circumstances ever...
Why didn't you do deep soil testing? First time?
If I may, Gary?
Yes.
The original plaque that goes back to the first time that they appeared before the board...
Right.
There's a deep test one and a deep test two. It says, "What is seen, we should add, it looks like three foot five inch," but it says, "No bedrock," and then it also says, "What is seen, we should add five and no bedrock." And it, obviously, it says, "Perpulation test A and B, it gives a stabilization rate of fifteen minutes per inch and twenty-eight minutes per inch." And Mr. Sandor signed off on these, on these plans. So, I mean, it seems like they did do a deep test, from what I can see on the, on the original plaque.
Did you? I did a test. I only did it on...
Yeah. Yeah, but maybe they did a perk test, hey, how did they do it all the way? What, what did they do?
I don't know. Listen, folks, we're, I, I don't know, I'm almost, all we're saying here is, is there a change of circumstances? I'm not an attorney, an attorney here, but I'm, all I'm saying is, they would like to put a basement in to make it easier to build this house and construct it and maintain it with a, an area where they can go down and work on this, this equipment. That's the, that's the gist of it, okay? Talking about a slab on grade for the original approval, that probably should have never been brought up and discussed during the last hearing, okay? What we're, what we're saying is, it makes better sense to have an area to go into the basement and work on this mechanical equipment. You talk to any mechanical H V A C person, it makes better sense to work on something in an area like that.
Gary, I have one last question to ask. But, Mike, the engineer...
Sure.
Mike, does the, or, Mike, maybe, Fish, I'm, I'm, I apologize, Fishberg. The question is for either one of you, does, does the existing variance that was previously granted in two thousand fifteen, does that allow you to build a bi-level similar to mine with four bedrooms and a combination furnace room? That would be partially at grade and partially below grade? Would that be...
No, there's no three bedrooms kept on, Gary.
Okay.
No, nothing.
Okay, would it, would it allow you to build a three-bedroom house, slab built partially below grade and partially at grade, similar to mine, with a laundry, combination laundry and furnace room?
No. It's all on the slab.
Then the driveway would be full feet underground, right?
No, the answer, no.
I don't see a change of circumstances.
I don't either. Do we need to hear anything else? Do we need to do anything?
The board person needs to make a determination whether a change in circumstances is presumed. If you give a, give them the one, and you hear from the public, and prove it from the applicant, and then decide whether or not it's a majority vote. If it's your determination that there is not going to show any change in circumstances, then you need to vote as to whether you will hear this, and it would require a, have the vote of all of you to hear it.
So if there's no change in circumstances, we need to decide we're going to hear it, and that would be unanimous? We have to vote unanimously, one way or the other?
At first, you have to decide whether they will show the change in circumstances.
Now, do we do that now, or do we do that during deliberations?
No, no, I think it's a preliminary step, determines whether you hear the matter at all. So two members of voice to reply.
I, I don't feel that there has been a change, that they've demonstrated a change in circumstances.
You need to do that.
I would say not, the, the pump system existed prior, I believe, by what Mr. Sandor said tonight, since two thousand.
Yeah, I would say that.
So, you know, it's, it was something that was available, there was a deep test, so I don't see a change in circumstances or facts.
No, but I think you should hear from all of them, I think.
Since Mike said there was no criteria, did I misunderstand, no criteria, no legal...
No legal definition, no...
The legal definition for change of circumstances, what...
Mike, can you, can you hear, Michael?
It's, I don't want to put words here, but whatever the board decides, whenever It's, I don't want to put words here, but whatever the board decides, whatever those words mean to you, I don't think they're, they're, they're not unique special purpose words, that the circumstances change, not the, not the applicant's attitude toward them. With that guidance, Karen, I don't, I don't know how, I have no clue whether the circumstances change. Certainly nothing striking. Majority of you, no striking circumstances.
Majority of you have found that there have been, there has been no change in circumstances, you now need to vote whether you're, whether you're willing to hear this one. Someone should move to rehear it, there should be a second, and then you'll vote on your hand.
And there's the senator.
I'll second.
How do you vote, Joe?
No.
Gary?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Andrew?
No.
And I vote no. So.
I will prepare a written decision based upon my notes of this evening.
So that's the, we do not see.
You don't go for it?
Okay. Next public hearing is Silverstein, continuation of public hearing for an area variance to permit the construction of an office building on a lot having a total lot area of 0.9 acres, whereas pursuant to section 310-7 bulk regulations, a total lot area of one acre is required. Furthermore, the property is located on a corner lot, having two front yards, and the applicant is proposing parking within a front yard. However, pursuant to section 310-40E, parking is not permitted within a front yard. Said property is located in the LC zoning district at 14 Corporate Drive in Central Valley, and is known on the tax maps, tax map as section 226 block one, lot 88. Uh, so the applicant, present this evening.
Karen, just quick, is this the same circumstances? I mean.
I was just gonna ask that.
We're reviewing a.
This is a previous.
A 1998 proposal here.
This is, um.
And I'd like to know if this requires changes in circumstances also.
Yes, this, in 1998, the property was subdivided, it was approved for a 6,000 square foot office, no construction was begun, 2005, amended site plan was submitted and approved, 2007, building permit issued, but the only work done was, in the whole year, was clearing of some degree. The permit expired in 2009. In 2009, a new amended site plan with conditions was approved. In 2010, new building permits were acquired, but no construction. Permits again expired in 2013, basically the same thing, site plan approved, special permit, architectural, architectural review board approval expired. Now, what we have is an amended site plan with increases in the building footprint and in the parking. So this is a 1998 decision, is this the same type of circumstance, or they have to show a change in circumstances? New facts and a change in circumstances?
Yes, it's the same, it's the same principle.
Okay. So, um. I'm sorry. It's hard to see the.
It's hard to see.
No, 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 it's this, um.
Why don't you take it out?
So, so what you need to do this evening is to provide us with new facts and a substantial change in circumstances since the previous 1998 decision. And we did receive a copy of the old plot and the 1998 decision.
Sure, so the, the.
Would you state your name, please?
Sure, Jason Pitten-Garrow, Pitten-Garrow Dodge, consulting in years, presenting the applicant tonight, Zora Silverstein. The project had, was gone before the planning board, we were here, we were referred to the planning board, back to the zoning board to, because they determined that it was a change in site plan, so that is the reason why we're here. The variances that we're requesting are the same in that they were variances for front yard setback, or parking within the front yard setback, and the minimum slot area. So the variances are the same, the site plan has changed, otherwise we would be back before just the planning board for site plan reapproval, like prior applications had been. And we could continue to go back before the planning board for site plan approval, but because there's a new applicant who has purchased a lot, is a completely different owner, and is a different, uh, building that is going to be constructed, that's why we consider it a change in the situation.
So that, that's your change in circumstances, is change of ownership?
Well, change in the building itself and the fact that the planning board has required us to come back here. Change of circumstances.
Right, when I asked last time, why the applicant, you know, wanted a larger building, the response was, well, he just liked a larger building. You know, that's what he wants for the property.
Sure, and the building, the variances aren't changing, the building is changing, and that is the only reason, the parking has changed. The parking has changed.
Right, right.
And we provided the, the prior plan, which demonstrates that the parking is fairly similar to what was before, there's parking in this area where it was before, and the parking in the front yards along.
But Karen, I think we should just get right to the circumstances.
Yes, I agree.
I want to.
I don't.
I want to know what circumstances changed.
That would require.
That can't use this old land.
The only circumstances that have changed are that it's a, a different owner, who has a different concept for the use of the property, which includes a different building. He doesn't, he doesn't have ownership of the prior architectural plans, he only has ownership of the lot itself. So regardless, he has to develop a different architectural plan.
What do you mean he has to develop a different architectural plan?
The, the plan that was used prior is not, is not a plan, his plan, it's a.
Oh, I see what you're saying. That he wants, okay. I don't see a change of circumstances, other than we have a new owner who wants to have a larger building.
I mean, I, I would ask Jason, respectfully, did you hear the last application?
Yes, I heard the last, yes, I heard the last.
Based on the direction that the board went in, and understanding the conclusions that the board came to, can you offer anything?
The only thing I can offer is that we.
Other than the new owner, blah, blah, blah.
Sure, the only thing I can offer is that we discussed this at the last meeting, I thought we had defined that it was a change of circumstance, we opened the public hearing, we heard from the public, we were, I thought we were near closing the public hearing, we left it open so that we could provide these materials that demonstrated how much more significant the variances were from the previous. So my understanding at that meeting was that we had already crossed this threshold.
Yeah, but then, then our attorney gave us this change of circumstances, and I wasn't really.
I didn't have a copy of the old decision, this, or the, or the old, um, plot.
I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't see a change in circumstances. Jason, I think Malik was on the same night, and we did discuss the issue, and to see whether there were a change in circumstances, we wanted to see a copy of the original decision, so the board could get a feel for it. So I think the issue was universal. And you're correct that they did hear from the public, because it was noticed for the hearing, in a sense, the cart was put before the horse in that sense, the same thing with Malik, but the threshold decision still is whether or not the board can hear it. And they can hear it, even if there's no change in circumstances, but they would need to vote unanimously to agree.
If they decide there's not a change in circumstances. What are your thoughts on change in circumstances? Joe, do you have a, a thought?
It seems very similar to the previous person on the agenda, in that, you know, in 1998, it was a 6,000 square foot building, and then through the years, they had to keep redoing it because it expired, but it still was a 6,000 square foot, uh, building. And the only difference that I could see is that, now that they want it to be almost an 8,000 square foot building, uh, situation. And of course, you have to have a corresponding, the greater amount of parking for it, so it seems to go by the, the desire of the new owner to make it bigger, rather than a change in circumstances.
Gary, what do you?
There, there's no change in circumstances, there's a change in choice.
Kevin?
No, I really don't think there's a change. I mean, the 6,000 is approved, the 6,000 square foot.
And I don't think that there's any evidence of a change in circumstances, besides the new owner.
I, I think this is more cut and dry, because it really, really is. I mean, the last one was a change in owner, well, it wasn't a change in ownership. This is strictly a change of ownership, and that to me doesn't really change the circumstances.
I agree.
So.
Now you need to decide whether or not you want to rehear it.
If there is no second, please.
I think you should make sure there's a second, so that you have.
So that we can vote, okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we rehear, um, this applicant's, uh, application.
I'll second it.
Joe, how do you vote?
I, I, I didn't hear what you said.
I made a motion.
You can call the last one, do you need? We're gonna work on that.
Uh, I made a motion that we rehear this applicant's application for a larger size.
And then I second it.
So Joe, how do you vote?
No.
Gary?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Andrew?
No.
And I vote no.
And I'll prepare a written decision.
All right, next public hearing, um, all right, we have.
They want a variance for the same thing.
All right, I, I'm thinking that there are two public hearings coming up here, but I thought we would discuss them together.
Mine was for three.
But deliberate separately, since they're two separate decisions. Do you have to hear my side, Joe?
Yeah, just as a point of order, we didn't close the public hearing on the last one, it depends on the court at this point, but I, I don't think it does.
We didn't have to close.
We, we both, you, yeah, inherently, there should not have been a public hearing, or at least have to make sure that it's closed.
You need a great mouth, Scott.
Do you want to make that motion, Joe?
I make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing on the Silverstein, uh, application.
No, so.
What about Malik? We didn't move that one, did we?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we didn't move it.
I don't know that you need it.
Because, right.
Just toss it. Okay?
All right, all right. Um, so I think what we'll do is, I'm sorry, let. No, they, they were not considered, so they're off the agenda. We have two related, um, applications from the same applicant, um, so I think, since they're related, we should discuss them together, but.
Yeah, but let's try to keep it to what they're asking for.
Okay.
O and R. There's a lot of technical stuff here that I would not understand.
Okay, O and R, um, first one, Melody Lane, public hearing for an area variance to permit the installation of a seven-foot-high chain link fencing with additional one-foot barbed wire on top of the fence, whereas pursuant to section 146-5A and B, a fence no higher than six feet is permitted, and pursuant to section 146-7B, barbed wire is not permitted. Said property is located at the existing Harriman substation in the ID zoning district at 91 Melody Lane, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225 block one, lots 13.
I wish they had that barbed wire to hear it and pull it up.
And the second public hearing is O and R at Woodbury Common, public hearing for an area variance to permit the installation of 68-foot-high utility towers, whereas pursuant to the schedule of district, district regulations, a maximum building height of 35 feet is permitted. Furthermore, the applicant proposes to install a 12-foot-high chain link fence with an additional one-foot barbed wire on the top of the fence, whereas pursuant to section 146-5A and B, a fence no higher than six feet is permitted, and pursuant to section 146-7B, barbed wire is not permitted. Proposed transmission yard is located within the Woodbury Common Shopping Center, in the rear of the property adjacent, adjacent to the cemetery. Said property is located in the ID zoning district, and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225 block one, lot 70.2. So it's my understanding that you're expanding the Harriman substation, you're constructing a new transmission yard at Woodbury Common, and this is because the DOT has requested that you relocate the overhead lines underground between the two, um, locations, is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Chair. Just for the record, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the zoning board, Village Council and staff, my name is Lino Scheretta, partner at the law firm, Multiviral, Convent and Frank. We're here this evening, as you stated, for these variances, and I know we're listed twice on the agenda, but if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'll just kind of.
That's what we would like to do, yes.
And I'll have my guys just come in and talk about each variance that we're requesting for each site, if that makes any.
Exactly, no, it is, it does.
So, again, the reason why we're here is because this is all part of the New York State DOT interchange for the future 86. DOT requested that we take some overhead lines and run them underground, that's the reason why we're here. But for that, we wouldn't need these variances, uh, this evening, and that's why this application has been made for the planning board and to your board for the variances. As you stated, Madam Chair, there are variances that we need for building height, for the transmission structures, also for the fence height on both sites, and for the fence materials, which is barbed wire, which will prohibit other code, but we're requesting here because other sites that O and R has, the transmission and substation, we have them for security. Just so you know, by way of background, again, the reason for this, because of the whole construction that's going on with respect to the exit 131 Woodbury interchange, um, this DOT project includes new off-ramps that are basically going to reconfigure and widen 32. So this is all, you know, part of this project, and we're kind of a small piece of it, that they asked us to move these lines underground, and that's why we're doing all this. Now, just by way of background, originally, this proposed, uh, transition yard was supposed to be at the entrance to the outlets on 32. Uh, that was originally a discussion with Simon Properties, O and R, and the Village, so we all got together and thought that was a bad idea, both from a neighborhood perspective and aesthetically. So what we came up with with Simon Properties, and which we thought was a good idea, and the Village Planning Board agreed, was to put this new transmission yard through the rear of the property near, uh, the cemetery. So that's where we're proposing the location, again, we just thought it was aesthetically just a better location, uh, putting it back there, the northeast corner. As I mentioned, the variances were seeking our height for the structure of the fencing. Uh, with respect to the expansion of the substation itself, we propose a seven-foot chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire, and at the substation presently, there's a pre-existing six-foot chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire, uh, for security, which will remain. Uh, given the construction of the potheads and the high bus stands, I don't pretend to know what they are, I know what they were in the plan, but I'll have my professionals here explain that to you, we seek a variance for the fence height to accommodate those bus heads and the, the bus stands, potheads and bus stands, rather. Uh, as for the construction of the transition yard, we're requesting an area variance in the 35-foot building height requirement. The plans show the installation of, uh, new transmission poles, which are 68 feet tall. Uh, in addition, like the substation, after the fencing, we're going to require fencing and barbed wire for security. Uh, the drawings with respect to the sub, the, the transition yard show a 12-foot, uh, chain link fence with one foot of barbed wire. Now, due to the overhead lines being relocated underground to accommodate this New York State DOT project, the area variances for this project really necessary to continue the electric service provided by O and R to their customers. And hopefully tonight, when we leave here, we'd like to think that we balance the area variance criteria, and taking into account that we are a public utility providing public necessity, we believe that there is no detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood here, or the community by granting these guarantees, particularly the location where it's, where we're proposing, the, the structures and the existence of the substation. Uh, with me this evening, I'll introduce our team, we have Jim Coza, our section manager, and Doug Moscato, who will speak, uh, after me, and we also have Greg Iban and Gerard Friedler here from O and R to answer any questions. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to the project team to go over the variances we're requesting. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is James Coza, I'm a, uh, an engineer, I'm employed by Argent Rock Utilities in the Transmission and Substation Engineering Department. As Lino had mentioned, we've been in discussion with the New York State DOT for many years, uh, with respect to this project, we've reviewed many different overhead options with the DOT, and ultimately it was decided that the DOT, and, uh, they requested that we place these lines underground, these are the transmission lines that originated the Harriman substation, they cross Route 17, run parallel to the Athletic Fields, cross Route 32, and traverse the parking lot of the Woodbury Common Shopping Outlet Center, and ultimately cross over the thruway and go up towards Harriman, um, I'm sorry, Highland Falls and West Point. The, um, facilities that we are proposing are typical of the facilities that we have at other locations on our system, and they are required in order to either meet or exceed the requirements of the National Electric Safety Code. The facilities that we are proposing are typical of the facilities that we have at other locations on our system, and they are required in order to either meet or exceed the requirements of the National Electric Safety Code.
Good evening, my name is Doug Moscato, I'm a civil engineer working with the Transmission and Substation Engineering Department, Orange and Rockland. What is to say that hasn't been said, we're looking for variances on the fence at both the Harriman substation and at the transition yard. Again, to meet or exceed our MESC code and company standards that we have been following at our substations and our transition yards.
Can you all just demonstrate exactly the location of both the transition yard and existing substation in the record?
This is the Harriman substation, Mercedes dealership, it's not shown over here, it's the Mercedes dealership is over here.
Excuse me, can you pick up the mic and talk about what you're...
Yeah, this is the location of the Harriman substation. The Mercedes dealership, which was recently constructed, is in this particular area. And this shows, the gray line shows the routing of the existing overhead facilities. The red line, which is a little more difficult to see, but essentially follows the same route, is the routing of the underground facilities as they originate from the Harriman substation. It would be terminated at the transition structure at the rear of the Woodbury Common Shopping Center.
Jim, can you just tell us why the height with respect to the transmission poles at that level, 68 feet?
The transmission structures that we propose are required in order to maintain the minimum clearance, to either meet or exceed the minimum clearance requirements for overhead conductors. And the height of the structures are comparable to those that exist in the rear of the Woodbury Common Shopping Center.
And those would be the original ones that are painted green that go up towards West Point?
The...
The height, pardon me, I believe the 68 footers have to agree with the original towers that go up the hill.
Correct.
The falls to West Point.
The lattice towers that exist there, the ones that are painted green, it's actually a combination of wood poles and lattice steel towers there. The height would be comparable to those that are there. The structures that we're actually going to be, if you want to say, removing and replacing are all wood. But just for size comparison, it's approximately the same height.
That's the ones that go across the parking lot.
Yes, correct. There'll actually be 16 wood poles in the Woodbury Common Shopping Center that will be removed as part of this project. Will be replaced by the transition structure and two new steel poles.
And the other two smaller poles are in the transition yard?
There are two poles that are actually outside the transition yard. They would be within the limits of the existing easement that we have through the Woodbury Common Shopping Center. There are also structures associated with the transition yard, which are shorter than the 68 feet, that are within the fenced-in area, that we're requesting a variance for the fence.
Those aren't the 50 footers, that are the 50-foot pole, lightning bolt, 354 footers?
Yes, those are them.
Okay.
It's all part of the same...
It's all part of the same, it's all part of the same project and the same parcel. But yes, they are the 55 footers.
So no pole is taller than any pole that already exists?
I would like to say, I would like to make that statement, but I can't truthfully make it because we don't have accurate records for heights on every single structure. But they would be of a height that is the, that would allow to maintain the code requirements. So regardless of the fact that whether they were within three or four feet or five feet of whatever it is, plus and minus, once they are not compared to an existing structure, there would not be a noticeable difference. But they would still maintain the minimum clearance requirements, meet or exceed the minimum clearance requirements.
I have a few questions at the Harriman substation. The fencing that's there, you plan to keep that and just add the other fencing, or you're going to replace it?
The existing footprint of the yard has to be moved out towards Route 17 slightly in order to accomplish the construction of the underground facilities, which will ultimately be energized. We have to keep the overhead facilities in service while the underground is being constructed. So the fence will actually be the, will actually protect the new perimeter that's established by the construction of these additional facilities.
No, I mean, my question is the existing six-foot fence that's there.
Well, the remaining portion, the sides of the fence that are not affected by this project will remain, yes.
Okay, and the barbed wire that's on top, will it be on top, or is it angled?
It's slightly angled.
Is it?
We can electrify it.
You should. It's angled, on the gates, it's straight, and it's actually angled outward on the remaining portions of the fence.
Okay. Also, at the Harriman location, if you look, you know, those big pieces of paper that you gave us, on the third paper, there's a diagram with all, what did it say on it? I don't know what it's called, but anyway, it says zoning bulk regulations, and it says the required height is 35 feet, and you have proposed height 40 feet, but you're not requesting a variance for anything that's five foot over the height requirement. So I'm wondering what that 40 feet is for.
The 40-foot reference in the bulk table is the existing lightning mast that's in the yard?
It says proposed, though. It says existing is 35, proposed is 40.
I don't see a column that says existing. It's actually, if there was a required existing and proposed, it would have been under existing.
It says on this one, it says lightning pole 40 feet.
The lightning pole has existed, it's there, it's not going to be new, and would have been part of any other variance that we have done.
Don't even go for it, 40 feet, it says proposed.
May I approach, just so you can take a look?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, this is supposed to be, not existing, it's a wire.
The lightning pole.
Oh, but it's already there, okay, that's why there's no request for a variance for it, okay, gotcha. Thank you, so that's an existing pole. On the Woodbury site, it's across from the cemetery, correct? And there's a 20-foot buffer for the cemetery?
Actually, that requirement gets you a little letter because of the planning board being back in, I think, August. Your village attorney, Mr. Golden, brought that up, as long as we're engineer, to say that that may be an issue. So we wrote to your building inspector, we respected that requirement, and he agreed with us and were the les of that effect, and if it's not in the record, it shouldn't be, because I think it was submitted in our whole packet, but it's not, I have copies tonight. But it was, the letter was written back in September by your building department, saying because we are a public utility, that we were not subject to that 20-foot buffer requirement.
So it's within the 20-foot buffer, is what you're saying?
That's correct, we're being given a variance for it.
Right, gotcha.
Correct.
What would be the distance? I didn't quite see, the distance from the transition yard to the fence, the black fence, let's say, for the...
From the cemetery. I think the corner structure, I think, is 60 feet away. And there are existing structures there already that are actually closer to what we're doing. If there's a one structure there, I think it's a maintenance garage, I think it's within 40 feet of that cemetery. And then you have the corner of the outlets there that's also within that buffer as well. I mean, that provision to code was adopted later on, but again, our closest structure is within 60 feet of that cemetery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the Woodbury Common site, it's right by the parking, right in the parking area there. Are there going to be any parking spaces eliminated?
And should you be talking about the transition yard?
No, I'm talking about the, yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yes, the transition yard.
Allow me to...
The removal of the existing wood structures that have islands around them will allow for the replacement of the lost parking spaces. So the Woodbury Common has worked out a parking space count of the existing and the proposed, and then the reduction, and the net is zero.
Okay, that's a concern.
So they only get 8,000 pounds of...
So my understanding is that between Woodbury Common and Harriman, the lines will be underground? The transmission lines will be underground?
Between the Harriman substation and the transition structure...
Right.
The lines will be underground, but they will...
But there will be lines above ground at Woodbury Common, across the parking lot there, correct?
From the transition structure to the existing easement, there will be overhead, yes.
Okay. Are those the only overhead lines that will remain or be in place?
With respect to this project, yes.
Okay. I'm done, who wants to take a turn?
Well, I don't know anything about electricity, so I just, I don't know how to turn the switch on. But I do know back in the early 90s...
Back in the early days when we used candles...
Well, back in the early 90s, a rogue, a police officer decided to go over and blow up the train to the Harriman station. So I would just be happy to have barbed wire around it and try to keep people out.
Well, I think it's a safety issue, I mean, especially at, especially at Woodbury Common, there's a lot of people coming and going. Not that they're looking to fly fences and...
I don't really have any questions, I mean, it's a DOT thing, if this project can help get them out of here quicker, I'm all for it.
Any other questions, Joe, Gary?
Not you, Natalie, I'm talking about DOT.
The only thing I had was about the cemetery, you already answered it. I mean, I know that there was a lot of discussion about that at the board, because I looked on it, and it was like the 30 feet, and is it a structure or is it a utility and so forth, but you've already taken care of that.
And if you'd like, if you don't have a copy of that letter, I have copies for you tonight, if you want me to submit that for you all, but again...
I believe what you're telling me.
You have the letter from your building inspector, if you want me to...
You can have it on the file and I'll spray it in.
Sure, you want me to just hand it out to you?
I believe it will.
I will do that.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I'm good.
Is the Harriman station a step-down station, is that stepping down the electricity, the current?
Yes, it's a 69,000-volt substation that steps the voltage down to 13,000, 13,200 volts, or 34,500 volts for distribution either to the local community or transmission to West Point Highland Falls.
Is that it, you're done?
Yes.
We're all done.
Thank you very much, unless there's something else you...
Jim, just wanted to...
Is the highest voltage you just stated, is that what comes off of the lattice towers too? Or is that usually wider over there with the 12-foot fence?
That is 34,500 volts currently.
Again, just one quick comment, and again, you mentioned that given this DOT project, and we're kind of on an expedited timeframe, not through our doings, but through DOT. So what I would ask tonight, if the board can close this public hearing, and hopefully, you'll make a decision on this for the next meeting, we would appreciate that.
The reason why you can't act tonight is SECPRA has not yet been closed out by the planning board, the lead agency.
Right, SECPRA, the planning board at the last meeting declared themselves the agency the 30 days that, you know, passed.
Why can't we act on it?
You can direct me to prepare a decision, as usual, but we will not be able to vote on it, SECPRA.
Correct, and we anticipate the planning board addressing SECPRA at the next planning board meeting.
And then we September... So then at our November meeting...
November.
Right, but then by the time we vote next meeting...
But that's when you will vote either.
Right, correct.
I just say hopefully, because it's possible that...
I'd like to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Would you hear from the public, perhaps?
Oh, yeah.
We didn't get there yet, we didn't get there yet.
We didn't forget you. I did. I forgot you.
I suggested.
I heard you had nothing to say tonight.
Anything else from the applicant?
No, just time to enter, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this application?
Some do.
Robin?
Robin Kraus-Hyland Mills. I am a layperson, I am not familiar with the industry, nor the mechanics and mechanicals. However, I am a member of the Woodbury Historical Society. We have a beautiful coffee cemetery, some of you know dating back to the 1700s. While these structures, I have no problem with the fence, I have issue with the structure. And I appreciate that it's not within the designated agreement of a 30-foot buffer that we had, and it's in one of the conditions with a special permit for a 30-foot buffer. I would have preferred 200, but that's the law, and it is what it is. I am concerned, though, personally, during construction, I'm sure they will be as careful and as respectful for a cemetery dating back to the 1700s as they possibly can. There are other structures there which have nothing to do with them, I totally, you know, acknowledge that. But, well, it may not be detriment to the area and the neighborhood, it possibly could be detrimental to the cemetery. And what happens if things unfortunately, you know, fall, these structures are substantial, yes, things happen, yes. Who's going to be responsible for repairing the cemetery? Well, can you make that one of the conditions? I don't mean to be funny, go flip about it. You know, there are people's, you know, families that reside there, and I don't mean to be funny about it.
No, I agree with you, but I just feel that the utility companies are so much governed by so many different...
Well, right, I understand that, the statute is a statute, I'm disappointed, but it is what it is, of course, we all have to abide by that. I totally get that. I get on with any conditions you could possibly put forward, though, would be terrific.
We'll put Gary on.
Okay, that would be great, thank you.
But I agree with you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public or from O and R? I'd like to say anything.
Sure, just to address the residents' concern, again, legally, because we are a utility, we don't have to comply with that 200-foot. But that being said, we are in excess of the 30 feet away from this, because the original 1997 resolution, I believe, had a 30-foot buffer. That was subsequently amended by your code, so we're keeping with that. And with respect to the actual construction and the issues surrounding that, I'll have Jim address it, just so you understand. We're really nowhere near the actual, limited disturbance of that cemetery during construction, and Jim could speak to that.
For every project that's undertaken by Orange and Rockland, an environmental health and safety plan is prepared. It's a detailed document that outlines the scope of work, the hazards that are involved, the environmental, if you want to say, implications or potential problems that can occur. Based upon comment this evening, I will make sure that the extra caution is exercised, and it is noted in the environmental health and safety plan that this has been a concern. I do not foresee any activities that would be anywhere near the cemetery, but just to be sure, we'll make sure that that's added into the EAS.
Thank you. Does that mean motion? Do we have anything else?
No.
You need a motion to close a public hearing?
Yes.
To make that motion. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there where we can have this on the agenda for your next meeting, I believe it was the 14th, Madam Chair?
The public hearing is closed, we're going to...
Decision only?
Delivering.
There's a decision tonight.
It'll be a draft decision, because we can't vote on it until...
You can hang out if you want.
You can listen, so...
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Maybe I should be on my own.
One of these guys has got a date with Peter Goultrich.
Which one has a date with Peter next door? He's having one of Marius.
I did not receive a building inspector's report. Anybody else?
No.
Alright, so there's none. Alright, deliberations on closed public hearings, which would be the two O and R public hearings, correct? Because we don't... Alright, so we have... Alright, so the first one is the Melody Lane. They want to install a seven-foot-high chain link fence with a, put a barbed wire on top. That's all they want, as far as Melody Lane. And we have a... interchange. Barbed wire fence already exists at the substation. They're simply seeking to relocate the fencing at the site. The request for the seven-foot fence with one foot of barbed wire complies with applicable safety code requirements. Does everyone agree with that?
I agree.
I agree. It's only a foot difference.
It's also, I look at it as a big safety issue.
Definitely.
Yeah, this is not something you want people, this is not... Yeah. Can the variances be done with any alternative? Their response is that... I'm sorry. Did you have something to say?
I think this, on my sheet, it says regarding the new transition yard, the area of...
Right, but we're doing now the...
Oh, I don't want to do both of them yet.
No, we can't, they're two separate decisions. So we're just doing the transition yard.
We're doing all together for the...
No, we're doing the...
One at a time.
One at a time. We're doing the Wood...
The Melody Lane.
Melody Lane.
Which way?
Okay. The benefit ORU seeks, Orange and Rockman, utility seeks cannot be achieved by some other feasible method other than the variances. Fence height of seven feet with one foot of barbed wire is considered the industry's standard for security and the public's protection and safety. Anyone? I agree.
I agree with that.
Okay. How substantial is the variance? They're saying it is not substantial. At the substation, ORU's proposal to install a seven-foot fence with one foot of barbed wire is minimal, divinimus.
It's hidden.
That's what it says. There's already an existing six-foot fence with one foot of barbed wire at the site. The additional one-foot fence height ORU is seeking is not substantial, will barely be noticeable, judged opposed against the existing fence. The additional one-foot fence is only in the area of the expansion where the fence has to be relocated in order to accommodate the new equipment. Anyone have a problem with that?
I'm good.
Okay. Fourth, impact on the environment. Proposed area variances will have no impact on the environment. Substation currently has a fence with barbed wire. ORU is requesting that the substation area be expanded with fencing and barbed wire with merely an additional foot of fence height. This will not impact the neighborhood. Again, the additional one-foot fence is only in the area of the expansion where the fence has to be relocated. Anybody have a problem with that?
I agree.
Okay. Number five, this is self-created. The need for these area variances is not a self-created difficulty. ORU's need for this work is directly related to the work that the New York State DOT is performing on the Route 17 interchange, and the only reason for their project is because of the New York State DOT. It's at their request. I agree with that.
I agree.
All right, do I have a motion to...
I'll make a motion. We give them a favorable decision for their seven-foot fence plus a foot of barbed wire.
At the Harriman.
I'd like you to prepare that.
Yes.
At the Harriman station.
Although we may not be able to vote on it until, but it'll be ready. If the SECPRA comes through before the next meeting, we'll be able to vote on it.
A nice second.
All in favor?
Maria, I would like to do it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Am I boring you, Maria?
Let's go.
Do you want to require...
Okay, now we're going to do the one at Woodbury Common, where they want sixty-eight-foot-high utility towers, where the building height is thirty-five feet, and a twelve-foot chain link fence with additional foot of barbed wire. Same questions, different answers. Will this produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood? The area variances for the transmission pole height and fence height will not produce an undesirable change. The location of the proposed transition yard is currently a parking lot.
I agree with that.
And the transition yard will be located in an area that's seldom used and will not impact any surrounding properties, except on holiday weekends. Anybody have a problem with closing an undesirable change in the neighborhood? Is there an alternative? As for the new transition yard, the height of the new transition poles at sixty-eight feet is necessary to accommodate the height of the existing overhead conductors. ORU is removing overhead conductors and placing them underground. ORU cannot lower the existing conductors as the applicable safety code clearance requirements must be maintained. As for the fence height, the proposed twelve-foot fence with one foot of barbed wire is commensurate with the structures to be constructed at the transmission yard and the appropriate industry's standard for public safety.
I totally agree.
How substantial is this? While the height of the transmission poles is close to double the available height in the Ivy Zone, numerical deviation alone does not make it substantial when there's no impact on the community. The height of the poles and proposed fence at the transition yard will not impact the character of the neighborhood, while an area variance can be deemed numerically substantial. When there is no evidence of an undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood, the area variance should be granted, and there's a quote from several... We do this all the time, just because something is numerically, you know, you could take it, but it doesn't accrue us from approving it. Anybody have a problem with the substantiality of it?
I agree.
Impact on the environment, the pole heights and fence of the proposed transition yard will not impact any neighborhood, as it will be on an existing parking lot. There will be no residential neighborhood at the site of the proposed transition, other than the outlet shops, and accordingly, there's no adverse impact with the pole and fence height.
Would impact on the environment be linked to the SECPRA determination? Yes, I think ultimately, if the planning board were to issue a negative declaration or even a positive declaration and a SECPRA planning statement, they would mitigate them, so yes, it will dovetail.
Technically, I'd say you can't, you can't say at this point, you can't answer that question, because SECPRA's not done.
SECPRA and this section are not necessarily the same, because often you have type-two variances, which are exempt from SECPRA, and you can still look at the environmental impact. Certainly, what the planning board decides will dovetail the foot of danger. I mean, it's almost like...
So we can make a decision on that particularly.
By then, you will already have...
Okay. So does any...
I don't have no problem with that.
I don't see anything...
Because they're taking that, or they're putting up a metal one. And when you stuff it in the ground.
Gary, you have a problem?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. Is this self-created, and the answer is the same as for the other, for this substation that DOT is requiring, is requesting this? So do I have a motion to make a favorable draft decision?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So do we have a favorable draft decision?
Aye.
Do I have a move to adjourn?
I make a motion. Second.
All in favor?